December tenth, school board meeting for Lawrence USD four nine seven. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to start tonight with some special recognitions and I think our first one is going to be presented by Steve Heffernan, the Kansas six A cross-country coach of the year.
Come on up. Make sure this works. There you go. See who we've all got. We'd like to thank the board for giving us an opportunity to introduce to you some fine young men and I guess you'll see the back of their heads for a little bit and then we'll have them spin around and we'll show you what their faces look like. When we first come up here, one of the things that's always kind of interesting to try to introduce them to you is I could share a lot of stories about how they performed throughout the season, but in reality, we were a young team and we really didn't come on very well till the end of the season, so our performances while we saw some progress happening in the races probably didn't show up till our last couple meets, but instead, what I'd like to share with you is why I think they achieved at the level they did and it's because they're a group of young men who really do care about each other. They represent a team of 120 people and one of the things that we talk about all season, oh, the turn. There you go. Very good. They represent a team where we talk a lot about empathy, resilience, self-belief, moral courage, responsibility, respect, and at times I think they pacify us by just listening to those things and nodding them, although I do know a few jokes went out on social media about some of the things that I would say. Sometimes they're misworded, sometimes they're just making fun of me, but it did tell me that they were listening, so that was nice. I'll take that as a positive. But at the end of the season, they came on because one of the things that's hard in any sport is sometimes you're relying on your classmates. They have a learning curve to go through and at the same time, they're so busy learning that they may not understand how to run for a group that's bigger than them, a team, a school, a city, but this group did and the state meet kind of came through. A lot of people that didn't know us were a little bit surprised, but at the same time, I knew when we went into the state meet that their focus was on being the best team they could be. Not necessarily what can I place at the state meet, what's my PR going to be, how fast can I go? And we didn't necessarily have our best race at the state meet, but it was very typical of our races over the season where some guys would maybe have a little bit of an average race, but other guys would really step up and kind of help out in that space. So this team did that at the state meet. We beat a lot of teams who had beat us all season long, but probably there were a couple things that jump out about the quality of this team. You know, one of them, and I'll introduce these gentlemen to you here in a second, Charlie, but you can wave initially, okay? Charlie was our lone state competitor last year. So when we went to the state meet, we took, everybody else was their first time at the state meet, and Charlie all season long had wanted to have teammates at the state meet because he felt a little lonely last year. So one of the things that happened for Charlie is he became injured at the end of the season, wasn't quite at 100%. So when we raced at the state meet, he wasn't quite at 100% there and even though he performed much better than he did a year ago, his first concern wasn't what was my time, did I medal, did I do anything like that? He wanted to make sure that his performance didn't limit his teammates from placing first. That was his first thought was how did my performance help my teammates? And so I thought that was very symbolic and I'll read one other thing, a letter from a fellow coach, competitor, and then I'll introduce him to you and we'll kind of move on. It says, "Coach Heffernan, we wanted to take a moment and say how great your group of runners were this season, boys and girls. They were always polite and courteous whenever I would say hello or was in the general vicinity of your tent. Your runners were every bit deserving of their stellar state performances and that lends credence not to just their character, but to your program as well. You and your coaches have shown yourself to be valuable pieces that helped create a greater whole and consistency and persistence in your program has paid dividends. We wish you and your runners the best moving forward in the spring and into the summer thereafter and who knows, with everyone nearly returning for your boys, this may be the team to beat next fall." So we always talk about, that's pretty cool, when other coaches send us emails commenting on their character and also wishing them luck because no one likes to get beat, but we, we're okay with that. So I introduced to you by class here, Dash Spears, a senior down there on the end, Charlie Johnson and John Lowe's are juniors, and then we have Ethan Sharp, Brock Cordova and Kobe Owen, who are all sophomores, and freshman Ben Trioc, so the Kansas State runner-up. So congratulations.
Congratulations. Hey, congratulations. Congratulations. Okay. Well, thank you for representing our district so well out there that other coaches are even noticing how awesome all of our students are, so I appreciate that too. Next up, we're going to talk about the Epic Project and this is going to be presented by Jenny Bernard. Did you say, and somebody else?
And friends.
And friends. And Patrick Kelly, clearly.
Jenny Bernard. Hi, I'm Patrick Kelly. I'm the director of career and technical ed and of the College and Career Center and we are really fortunate to have the Boys and Girls Club Teen Center as our new partners out at the College and Career Center. And when we were approached by the Center for Public Partnerships last year and they said, "We have an idea of something that we're doing in some other areas and we think Lawrence would be a great place to do it," and the school district's partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, we thought, wow, just more partners, partners, partners. And so we said yes and I really want to thank our two high school principals and Rick Henry who sort of made something possible that we've really never done before, which is give high school credit to middle schoolers during the summer for coursework that they're doing as part of the Boys and Girls Summer Program. So this is really unique and really a great opportunity and we hope we can expand on it, but I'll let Michael Lemon with the Center for Public Partnerships up at KU and Jenny Bernard, who is our teacher who's been working on this project, discuss a little more and introduce our students and give them some credit tonight.
Hi, everybody. I'm Michael Lemon with the Center for Public Partnerships and Research at the University of Kansas and we set out with a pretty audacious goal about 2014 to connect young people who are in middle school to high school credit and I'll tell you, this has been not easy. And as you all know, there's a lot of bureaucracy and there's a lot of different barriers that we run into when we try to work this process because as you know, the clock starts the minute you start to get high school credit, right, for that, for that high school diploma. And so I have to give you all really a lot of credit. You were an early adopter in this process. You're the very, very first school that we've gotten a chance to do this with, the first district. So thank you so much for your attention to this and allowing us to be innovative and try something new because the out-of-school time space, like, you know, after-school, out-of-school time space is an actual opportunity for young people to connect and grow and learn. And in this situation, it's going to give young people a chance to earn that high school credit before they actually get there and so this is the first time we've done it, so thank you so, so much and I'm so proud of the students here for taking that on and being an early adopter with us. So thank you so much for having us and letting us be here tonight.
Hi, my name's Jenny Bernard. I teach at Lawrence High School and had the opportunity to work with these young folks over the summer as they chose, they were not forced or coerced in any way to participate in this program, which takes a lot of courage when everyone else is sort of having free, fun summertime, right? They chose to come in and get a little bit of work done knowing that this was going to benefit their future, so really, really hard work that they did when everyone else was maybe doing something else that looked a little bit more enticing at the time, so I'm super proud of them. We had five students that completed enough coursework to pass the course, to get credit for it, and we have two of them here today. So I'd like to give them their certificate of completion. So we have Akosia Danso. And Cody Smith.
You might be a little bit interested what they learned this summer. So it is a, it's part of our human services pathway. The course is called Community Connections. It lined up really nicely, sort of understanding all the careers that go into the human services pathway and a lot of those soft skills that they'll need to be successful in it. We use a digital badging system, which is created by the Center for Community Partnership, so it really has the potential to be something we can use again and again or even use in our, during the school year courses as well. So big thanks to Jenny for, for being brave and for all these partners who are stepping up. It's always hard. It's funny, last time I was here talking to you about high school credit for college and now we're talking about middle school credit for high school, so we're just breaking all kinds of barriers, so thank you. They're going to all want to shake your hands, all right?
Thank you, everybody involved with that program. Okay, so we will move on to the report of the president of the board. I have a short report tonight. I wanted to let everybody else on the board know that on Thursday, November 29th, so Thursday after our last board meeting, Dr. Lewis and I went to the Youth Behavioral Needs Meeting with the other superintendents in the county and county administration and we had Decca there talking about, I can never really remember, the Kansas needs surveys. It's basically a way that we collect survey. If Kevin was here, we'd make it, well, what's it called, Kevin?
He doesn't know either.
He's not going to say. But they run a test that basically schools, we used to use it and we're thinking about going back to using it so that we can have similar data across all of the school districts in the county that assesses sort of more of that behavioral need, that sort of what's going on at home, how are things going with you as a student and not so much the academic piece. And so that was one thing they reported on and about how they use that data and how it can help, how they then could, you know, start working with, with us as a district a little bit more closely. And then we also then discussed the RAP workers, the county, of course, as we all know, passed the referendum and so they have some money and they want to put RAP workers in all of the districts. Now, obviously, we've had them for some time, but some of our, our other districts in the county have not and so we're going to meet, the next meeting, we're going to have Burton Nash there and really talk about the RAP program, what's working, what could maybe be improved upon and be a part of that conversation with Burton Nash to, to think through how that, how that program could maybe serve all of our schools, you know, even in a more, in a more positive way than they already have been. So I think that'll be an interesting conversation. That same day, we interviewed strategic planning firms, so it was myself, Melissa and Shannon were a part of that process with Dr. Lewis and the executive leadership team. We interviewed two firms and we got some good information and then we were going to do some, we didn't make a decision, there were a lot of follow-up questions we had, so the, Dr. Lewis and his team were following up with some additional information from both firms before we really officially, you might have more information about that tonight. On Saturday, December 1st, I attended the Kansas Music Education Association Northeast District Concert, which of course my son's in, as everybody knows, he's a big singer and so it was a great concert, it was at Topeka High, beautiful auditorium, and then Dr. Dunn, who's the choir director, the high school choir director at Lawrence High, won the High School Music Educator of the Year Award, so well-deserved award and I think we're going to honor him and a couple other people that won some other awards here in a couple meetings from now. I know KASB held their annual conference in Kansas City that same weekend, which I did not attend, but I know Shannon did and I'm sure that we'll hear some more about that. And then finally, this Wednesday, December 12th, is Dr. Lewis's birthday and so I did want to make sure that we recognize that and say happy birthday, Dr. Lewis. I would make everybody sing, but I feel like, you know, we won't, we'll spare you that.
You can do that, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, yeah, well, maybe GR can sing for you later. So happy birthday.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll pass it on to you.
All right. Thank you. Several items here I want to share. One, Educate Lawrence, which is a parent legislative advocacy committee, they've already begun meeting, but I understand this was a committee that was in operations several years ago and we're bringing them back and so Lawrence parents, Noreen Spears and Amy, I'm probably about to butcher this last name, Gotchammer, was close, they're leading this group and they're asking that each school identify a parent, a representative that will serve on this committee. They would also like board representation as well and they have scheduled their next meeting for 6:00 PM on January of the 3rd here at the district office. Some exciting news, the Kansas Department of Children and Families, or DCF, will announce the Kansas Reading Roadmap Grant in the amount of $264,200 to fund after-school, summer and family enrichment all around literacy at Pinkney, Schwegler and Kennedy Elementary Schools. DCF Secretary Gina Meyer-Hummel will be at Pinkney on this coming Thursday at 11:30 to announce this partnership. DCF has also invited members of the media, state legislators, state board members and others to attend and at this event, they will also release its statewide, KRR, which is the Kansas Reading Roadmap, will release its statewide evaluation and annual report and we are inviting all out and definitely inviting our board members out to attend as well. With the one snow day we have, our inclement weather day on November the 26th, we're hoping we won't have to have anymore, but we will use the designated day that was already identified on the calendar of April 19th as the makeup day. Quest Bridge announced its national college match for full scholarships to the nation's top colleges for more than 1,000 high-achieving, low-income high school seniors and we want to say congratulations to Lawrence High's Emily Guo, who will be attending Washington University and Gary Schmidt, he has been accepted to Stanford University, so congratulations to those two scholars. Several of our middle and high school student musicians were part of the, and I saw this on the news, I didn't know we had students involved in it, but they were part of the Guinness Book of World Records Tuba Christmas performance of 835 tuba and euphonium players in Kansas City at the municipal auditorium. So we had some USD four nine seven students that are now in the Guinness, are part of the Guinness Book of World Records for that tuba performance. A number of our high school students, artists and photographers had worked accepted into the 22nd Annual High School Visual Arts Competition hosted by Marion, Kansas Parks and Recreation Department. Their work will be publicly displayed on December the 29th at the Irene B. French Community Center there in Marion. I want to invite everyone out to attend the district's annual One Dream, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration on January the 24th. This year it will be at Southwest Middle School. The gallery opens at 5:30 with the program and the MLK Awards to follow at 6:30 PM. We took a team of about 17 staff, principals, learning coaches, district staff to the Avid Conference in San Diego this past weekend. We're super excited to come back and debrief about our learnings and how we can possibly implement more Avid into our schools. Everyone knows I'm hugely competitive, so I want to say congratulations to our Lawrence High Boys Basketball Team. They were the champions this past weekend in the Blue Valley Shootout and they also beat Grandview High School, which I'm a friend of that superintendent, so I text him and said, "Did you see the game?" And then for the championship, we were able to defeat Lee Summit High School in Missouri. I'm also a friend of that superintendent, so I tweeted him as well. Yeah, he was a friend, was a friend. Tomorrow's Board Breakfast, we will, we will be at Sunflower Elementary School at 8:00 AM.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lewis. So, we'll move on to patron commentary. We have what looks like maybe four, that'll be after, yeah. And so, I'm gonna start with Eric Hyde. Okay? And you come up, and I'm gonna read a little bit of instructions for patron commentary. So, basically, we welcome comments, and thank you for giving feedback and taking the time to talk with us about our policies and procedures. This is your time to share opinions. However, complaints about specific staff or students will be heard in executive session in order to protect the privacy of those individuals to be discussed. And while you're not required to share your contact information, we like that you do so we can follow up, which you did, so thank you. And please limit your comments to five minutes or less.
Wow, that's a lot of information.
Yeah.
Well, I used to work here, three years ago, I was born here, 1985. I attended all the Lawrence Public Schools, Broken Arrow, South Junior High at the time, Lawrence High School. I'm a successful filmmaker. I've won six awards this year. I've won Best Web Series at the Hollyweb Festival across the street from Capitol Records on Vine Street this year, on April 6th I won. I won Best Web Series at the Manhattan Film Festival in New York City. I met Alec Baldwin, I've met Carolyn Goodell, who's from the movie Hook. I met her actually this year in London at BAFTA. She played Robin Williams's wife in that movie. But basically, I came up here because I felt compelled to support the pairs who work in this district, and I'm pretty sure they're still not being paid what they should be paid. I used to be a pair here. I quit here because I felt severely undervalued. I was making about 10, 27 an hour. It was my third year, I was working with kids with severe behavioral and emotional needs. I still love those kids like they were my own children, and I just like, I wish I could help them. But anyway, I'm just trying to give you a heartfelt perspective because I think this is too hoity-toity. Like, you guys gotta take care of your employees. Because if you take care of your paraprofessionals especially, you're gonna get better results from your kids. And that's why you're here, for the kids. You're not here to collect more money than the pairs. And Melissa Johnson, I love you. You're awesome.
Thank you.
I love this woman. I don't even have, like, intimate feelings for her, but... She's awesome. Alright, I don't know what else I'm gonna say. Oh, and I also want to help. I want to volunteer. I'm scared if someone's gonna tell me no, but I really want to help. Like, I love working with kids. I worked with kids in elementary, middle, and high school here in Lawrence High, or in Lawrence, Kansas. And I quit because I hated how, like, I was being devalued, even though it might not have been anybody's fault, really, but I think it kind of was. But anyway, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Caitlin McAndrew Beckman.
Okay, good evening. Oh, goodness. Good evening. I would like to start by saying thank you all for your time. My name is Caitlin McAndrew Beckman, and I'm a Free State senior. Next year, I will be attending Emporia State University to major in elementary education. I have handouts that I gave you guys. So, during my presentation, if you would like to reference those, that'd be good. I'm here to talk tonight and ask you all to consider pushing back start times for high school from 8:05 to 9:05. I have done research, as seen in my packet, that supports pushing back later start times, allowing for students to get more sleep. Having more sleep will benefit them mentally and physically, which in return will improve their lives inside and outside of school. I believe that this is important, an important topic to discuss, and I understand that there are supporters and skeptics. But I like to talk, but like I talk in my packet, there are ways to solve the problem with compromises on both ends, including my main proposal, which is switching from six-hour days to seven-hour days, which is allowed with how much, like, hours we have for amount of credit that we need. There's a lot of lenience with that. Allowing schools to get around, get out around the same time so that sports and activities wouldn't have to get pushed back too late. I also propose that zero hour starts around 8:00 AM and is offered first to students who have limited ride availability in the morning. To see more in-depth of my schedule ideas, you can see page 7 of my packet. To close, I would like to say thank you again for your time. And to reiterate how important I think this topic is, I'm a senior, have been involved in cross-country NTRAC for four years at Free State, and on the journalism staff for three. I know what it is like to have a lot on my plate and feel like I can't, I feel like I'm so tired that I can't perform at my highest level. In the long run, I think it will benefit students and staff, creating a better school environment and positively affecting lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Next, we have Laura Elder.
Hi, my name's Laura Elder. I'm a parent in the community. I have a first grader at Deerfield. And mostly, I just wanted to bring to your attention, in case you weren't aware, or make sure we're working towards a solution. But many times this year, there hasn't been adequate substitutes, meaning like bodies, not that the substitutes aren't doing a good job, but there haven't been people to cover my daughter's classroom. And she's really freaked out now. She doesn't feel safe going to school because she walks in and she goes, "Is my teacher gonna be there?" And if it's not, a lot of times, there's been a substitute for just half the day. And then, the second half of the day, they don't have anybody. So, they've either been shuffled into other classrooms. One time, her entire class was taken and put in another first-grade room, so there were 44 kids in one room, which feels like at least a fire code violation. And beyond that, nobody was learning, the teacher can't do her job. So, I don't know. When I talked to the school principal about it, she said that there was a shortage of substitutes, and she was hoping with KU's December graduation that there would be more substitutes coming. But I just didn't feel like I got a good explanation that there should be other people in the school, maybe that could cover learning coaches, the principal, I don't know who technically is qualified and can do that job. But when my daughter is scared every day, and she's like, "No, I don't want to go because I don't know if my teacher's going to be there," that's a big problem to me. And I do know that there was some language in the negotiated agreement about compensating teachers if they have extra kids in their classroom. And that was a good start, but I don't really feel like that's a solution that they should be able to just split the kids up and say, "Hey, take 10 extra kids for the day." That's not really benefiting anybody. It's kind of learning a half, losing a half or a full day of instruction, and also upsetting some of the kids. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will look into that. Thank you for letting us know your concerns. The next person we have is Janu Marnett. Did I say that right? It does not look like Jeannie, I will say. Jeannie, come on up. Thank you.
Any chance I can take over your screen? So, I've got some cool pictures to give you.
Yes.
How do I do that? Or what am I connecting to?
Good question. So, Julie?
Ale Maine, Ale.
We've got IT coming up to help you.
Hey, I kind of like you. It's good to see you. Okay, let's see if I can get this. Not a teacher who normally teaches with PowerPoint, so... I'm gonna have to slide it over. There we go. Are we in present mode? Thank you, guys, for being patient with me.
Merritt?
There we go.
There you go.
I got it. My name is Jeannie Merritt. I am one of the coaches with Team Steam Robotics. I've also got my colleagues here. He's our CEO of our team. We wanted to reach out to the board because we've got kind of a neat event happening at Lawrence High School on Saturday, and wanted to let you guys know about it, if you wanted to come and come see some cool stuff going on. Basically, it is the First LEGO League Tournament that we are hosting. And as of right now, we have 39 4th through 8th grade teams and 11 kindergarten through 3rd grade teams who are coming to present their robots and their research projects. And what First LEGO League is, is obviously, the students use LEGO Mindstorms robots to do different challenges. And it's set up really nice that there's no way for them to completely design a robot that will do all the challenges, so they have to kind of strategize and see which ones they want to do. But that's not all that they're doing. This is also, First LEGO League is a great example of problem-based learning in that the challenge that goes out to them, obviously, the, everything is based around space this year. But they also have to do a research project, and they have to identify a potential problem for astronauts doing long-term travel in space. And then, they have to research their own solution. So, they have to come up with a problem, they have to research the solution. And what's cool about First is they also encourage the students to reach out to industry professionals to get feedback on their solution, and then go through the entire design process. So, you get to see really cool research projects that go on. Lawrence currently has five FLL teams that are run either by private parent groups or by scout groups. We've got, oh, gosh, I'm gonna try to remember all the names. Sleep Squad, the names are awesome. Sleep Squad, Lawrence LEGO Mafia, The Cosmic Cookies, which is a Girl Scout group, Think Tanks, and Green Holes. And you can see that they also work on branding, so if you come, you get to see all the amazing, you know, costumes and tutus and everything that is amazing with it. This tournament is hosted by Team Steam Robotics. We have all 50 of our team members that are serving in some capacity at this tournament, either as ambassadors to help shepherd the community through, to inspire the younger...
Did I kill it?
Yeah, you did.
I killed it. Keep going, keep going, keep going.
I'm the English teacher, man.
I know your attack guy's killing you.
So, the service ambassadors to inspire these kids, like, this is what we can do later on with robotics because these guys get to play with the big robots, whereas the FLL teams tend to be much smaller. And I know that FLL tends to inspire our high school members. You guys tend to be excited about it, too. No, I'm gonna move so they can hear you.
And I was told I just had to stand here and look pretty. Me and Paradise are both very good at doing, except when we do that. So, I guess, I started FLL, or started volunteering with First LEGO League last year. I just, we were hosting this tournament for the first time, and I was a referee. And I just had no idea what to expect going in. I did a ton of research about the game, and I kind of fell in love with it before I ever even saw it. I saw all these kids that were trying their best and spending and dedicating all of their free time and thinking about this last year. And then, after our tournament last year, I volunteered at the state tournament. And then, this year, I've already volunteered at three events, and I'm volunteering at our event and the state tournament. And I've jagged a lot of my younger kids that are in high school. I call them my kids, I'm sorry. I, so I dragged my kids to volunteer with me just because I think it's so awesome that the smaller kids, the little elementary schoolers, get this opportunity that I really didn't have as a child. And I feel like it kind of mirrors whenever an older adult speaks to me about what we do in robotics, and they just say, "Wow, that's so cool. I wish I would have been able to do that." And then, I go to the kids, and I say, "Hey, I wish I would have been able to do that."
It's a cool event. Basically, we wanted to invite you to come out and come see this tournament, if you would like. It is at Lawrence High School, it is this Saturday. We'll start, we'll start really insanely early, but the fun stuff to come see is between 8:30 and probably 11:30 in the morning. You can come in and come to the gym, there will be the robotics program going on. You can also view the teams, go ask them about their research projects. So, we just want to extend that out to you guys, if you'd like to come out.
It was a lot of fun. I was at Wyandotte High all weekend long, volunteering there as a project judge. Fantastic stuff. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, we will move on to board commentary. I have some. Shannon? I don't have to go first, though, somebody else has some. Okay.
You want to first get my attention first? So, I think it's kind of my line of sight.
My side, right? Yeah.
Okay. As Jessica mentioned, last weekend was the Kansas Association of School Boards Annual Convention in Overland Park. And I did attend as a board member and president-elect for the association and as the voting delegate for our district. I went on Friday to, they had a pre-conference session on, it was called a cultural proficiency workshop, and it was facilitated...
Can I interrupt you? Caitlin? Caitlin? I'm gonna speak to your comment in just a minute. Would you mind sticking around for just a couple minutes? Sorry.
That's okay. They did a cultural proficiency workshop that was facilitated by one of the board leadership development staff with KASB. And then, also, Phyllis White Cotter, who is with Wichita, and Frank Henderson, who is a board member in Seaman School District. Fantastic day. It was really, it was a really good workshop, and it was, it was, it demonstrated a lot of ways that, for example, in the work that Wichita has done, they've taken the kind of equity work that we've been doing in our district, and they've really figured out how to move it forward in the classroom a little more. And so, it was, I came away with some good insights and some good ideas. So, we can talk about that in more detail at another time. The rest of the conference was well-attended, a lot of really great sessions. I attended a really nice session that one of our middle school principals, Brad Kemp, who's the principal at West Middle School, did on developing student leadership and the things that they've been doing at West, and he did a really nice job. So, we approved our legislative agenda and some of that information and some of their legislative advocacy positions. I used in the work that we did to put together the materials that are on the agenda later tonight for informing our legislative agenda. In addition to that, we did choose a new president-elect designee who will become president-elect in July. Her name is Lori Blake, and she's from southeast of Celine District. And she's fantastic, so I'm really excited about working with her. It was a good weekend. In addition to that, GR and I had a facility planning committee meeting last Thursday, and we heard an update from the architects and construction managers on the bids for the Liberty Memorial Project and West Middle School Projects. The bids came in very favorably, so we were able to capture a number of alternates that had been bid out. And they, those alternates will address some outstanding projects of those buildings that were identified that were beyond the scope of our pre-bond planning, but they've been, things that have been on our capital improvement plan over the years. And so, I was really excited about where we are with that. The bids on Lawrence High will be coming in either this week or next week. And once that is complete, we'll have a pretty good idea of what can go into the draft capital improvement plan that will come before the board after the 1st of the year. And did I leave anything out?
I was just gonna say, we're hoping that the bids for Lawrence High are equally as favorable. And so, we may be, we may, there is a small chance, depend, directly dependent on those bids, that we can even go back and revisit some of those extra items. We may not be done. The hope is that there's no secondary school item on the capital improvement plan that we can capture at all, everything that we want to do with those bond dollars, depending on how those bids come through.
I have a couple questions for you, Shannon. One is regarding the equity course that you sat through. If you wouldn't mind summarizing that and maybe sending it to Melissa and I and Dr. Stubblefield, and that would be helpful, I think, for us to take to the Equity Council. And then, the other one I wanted to follow up, did you, were you able to circle back with Site Council President at LCMS about things that could be covered?
Yes. I actually had a long conversation with her on Friday.
Great.
After the meeting, and...
She had reached out to the board, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, I did. I emailed her after the meeting. Yes, I did. I emailed her after the meeting and then I actually saw her the next day. And so we had a really good conversation, kind of filling her in on everything that we had talked about and where we were at. And with the promise to follow up, once, once we know more about how the bids are gonna come in on Lawrence High and what that draft capital improvement plan is gonna look like. I think, I think that on the whole, the plans as they are, what we were able to capture within the initial set of bids for Liberty Memorial captured a lot of upgrades in painting and flooring and things like that, that really have needed to be done and are the sort of things that, those are the things that people see. And so I think it's really important that we are capturing as much of that as possible. And I was pleased with the scope of what we were able to put into the work that is initially part of, of the bond dollars.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Rick?
Yeah. So I was gonna give an update on the High School Start Time Committee anyway. And so I think the timing, Caitlin, was quite good. I want to thank you for putting this together and for coming and speaking to the board. It's not an easy thing to do. And I also get the impulse to leave as soon as you're done. But, so I skimmed this. You got it right. I'm gonna read you some more detail. I'm gonna distribute it to the committee as well. We met on December 3rd. We reviewed the raw data for the surveys that came in. We will be meeting on January 7th to come up with our final recommendation and then we will bring that to the board. So that's, that's, that's the update. Yeah, so I wanted to say that, but also again, Caitlin, thank you for, for doing that. I wish we had more students come and talk to us because we, you know, we get the grown-up perspective, the adult perspective, but we don't get the, the high school or the, either middle school perspective. So, so thank you for doing that.
Anyone else?
Yeah. So a couple of weeks ago, Dr. Lewis had extended an invitation for me to serve on, to serve, to go and visit, offer any insight I could on the district's power school. I don't know, what do we call it? Power school support team, yeah, power school team that's meeting on a weekly basis now, every Friday from ten until noon. And so we've had two meetings and so those have been, those have been really good to go to and to, to see the structure and to, and to see the, the process, the, just for your information to report back. We spend a lot of time talking about this is what, this is what the team accomplished last week. This is what the team's going to accomplish this week. And then what's on the roadmap for the next month, for the next three months, that we need to be aware of. What do we need to address, individual things? Trying to provide as much insight as I can for my own career and own personal things. So we had a, we, after the meeting this last Friday, we probably had a twenty, twenty-five minute conversation on just the process of logging tickets and processing tickets and how do you balance ticket work versus an individual phone call and tracking that through the system, which is something I deal with on a daily basis. So it's been good. It's been fun. I got, got to be involved in the video that's gonna go out, so that was, that was good, too. So it's, it's been, it's been, it's been good. It's been fun.
Thanks for doing that. I mean, I think it's, it's great that you have that expertise and can offer to help. So I think it's good. Hopefully, you're enjoying having him. I know sometimes, you know.
Julie's always there.
Yeah. Julie's just not gonna comment, probably.
No, Julie, Julie won't comment at all, whether I'm, I'm a positive or negative impact on the committee. Yeah, no.
Okay, Kelly, did you have something you want to say?
So I attended the Native American Student Service Meeting and I wanted to tell everyone that on the twenty-third, January twenty-first, our twenty-third is the Indian Youth Pageant. And I'll, I'll bring more information as we get more detail, if Jennifer doesn't pass that along to us, which I'm sure she will. So it will be held at the Billy Mills Middle School, so that's exciting. They also are looking at moving their offices to the College and Career Center, which we all remembered. I didn't remember as we were talking about it, but it came to me eventually. So got to hear a little bit about the anxiety around moving and then the excitement around moving and, you know, all the things you have to consider when you're going out there. And one issue I asked that they kind of keep an eye on is the transportation issue and making sure that families can get to them out there because it's, it's, it can be kind of a ways. So that was one of the things we discussed. Shannon and I met as a policy committee with Dave and, who joined us? Kathy Johnson and Kyle. Kyle joined us. And we're still working on the sponsorship and advertising component of the policies related to that. As we look at fundraising, we're trying to align them together. So we have no recommendation to bring to you, but that's essentially what we're working on and looking at next steps for that. And then I met with Lori Basham and Kevin Harrell. We went to see, we went and had a meeting at the Center, the KU Center for Public Partnership and Research. We saw some of the badges they did today. We met with some of their leadership team and it looked like there's some exciting initiatives that we might be able to partner with as a school. I think I started to, Melissa started in on some of those conversations as we were doing some scheduling. So we're looking at the early childhood component and then also looking at the, some of the social-emotional work that they do. So I just wanted to let you, that's all in a very beginning phases, but hopefully there's some strong partnerships that can come out of that because they're doing really interesting work. We got to watch a, a video of the teenage brain and as a mother of two teenagers, it was a very valuable meeting for me. I was glad to have attended and am excited about maybe some future endeavors and partnerships that we can have as we look at expanding our KU partnerships. And I believe that, oh, I had this other comment I wanted to make. I attended the Lola Art Fair at Van Gogh and there were two teachers there. A LHS teacher and a Free State teacher who are both art teachers and have a business that they put together. And I'm afraid that I am coming to you with, I was hoping to come with more complete information, like for example, who they are. So I'm gonna get that and bring that to you. And maybe, I was hoping maybe someone else in the audience would know right away, but I, oh, good. Yes. Okay. Okay, Rachel Downs and Bailey Maribel. Is that right? Okay, so they are phenomenal. So we were talking about the social-emotional work that we do and I heard them talking to someone that was looking to buy some of their products. And they were explaining how they teach and how they incorporate social-emotional work in their art classes and not knowing that I was the board member sitting behind them as they were doing it. And they were explaining how they work on these art projects. So one starts it and then they pass it to the other teacher and they work on them for, for selling. But it was all inspired on, or at least inspired in part by the work that they do in their classroom. So I just wanted to recognize them publicly and I knew it was gonna be incomplete, but I, I was hoping someone would help me with this recognition and it came, it came to pass. So I appreciate that. So yeah, yeah, great, a great partnership, great business and lovely, lovely teacher. So that was really great to see. And then I have this final thing I wanted to share with you all. Last meeting, there was, we had a comment about how when we are working with students that are interacting with the Medicaid system, that occasionally when we are experiencing, as we're trying to help them with attendance issues, that we have to work with their case managers to be able to bring them into the school building. Well, I had an opportunity as part of my career to have a meeting with some folks that work at, work for DCF, which is Department of Children and Families. And I was reminded that case managers with BSW, so undergraduate degrees, when they go into the field, they make fourteen dollars an hour, those case managers do, and have very heavy caseloads that really reminded me how important it is for us as a district to strengthen our partnership with case managers with that in mind, what their caseload is like and how we can build partnerships with area case managers to make sure that, that we know who they are and that sometimes we're going to them instead of in the reverse. So I just wanted to mention that. And that, I believe, is all I had. So thanks.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else?
Yeah, I wanted to, I know that there are a lot of high schoolers and getting ready for final exams and, and papers. So I wanted to remind them, take a deep breath. You can do it. You have all the knowledge that you need there and then some. And with that also, with the stress, check your emails when you send emails out to your teachers because I've received a couple and I know there's a teacher named Melissa Johnson at a high school. Especially if your teacher's Melissa Johnson. And it's not a big deal. I'll just remind you that. Make sure it says LHS on, on the email instead of BOE.
And on the finals, get a good night's sleep.
Yes, there you go. And I would just add one more thing for board members and community as well. Next Monday, the Equity Advisory Council and Delta work groups are gonna have a work session. And so it's kind of outside of our normal meeting time and it's specifically gonna focus on the MOU with the Police Department on our SRO. So if you're interested in listening to that or if any of you out there listening want to come sit in on that, then know that that's happening and you certainly can come.
Can you send, can you send an email about that?
Yeah, certainly. And with that, we'll move to consent agenda. Consent agenda items are those that are considered routine and are adopted by one motion unless any board member or superintendent requests that an item be removed. The items removed are voted on separately. And before we make the motion, I know we have a couple retirements. Just one retirement.
The board would like to express their sincere appreciation to Lori Craig for twenty years of service at Lawrence Free State High School. Thank you, Laura. I move that the board adopt the items listed on the consent agenda. Second.
Johnson.
Yes.
Venture.
Yes.
Gordon Ross.
Yes.
Ingram.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kimball.
Yes.
Beeson.
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Okay, so our first order of new business is the approval of mid-year budget reductions and Kathy Johnson is gonna walk us through that, as well as the approval of the compensation packages.
Good evening. Kathy Johnson, Executive Director of Finance. This particular enclosure comes ahead of a couple of the ones that Dave Cunningham will, will walk through with you for compensation. Primarily, the compensation packages that are being approved tonight after this exceed what our set aside amount was for settling with compensation, both for certified, classified and administration. So in order to make sure that all kind of stays in sync and doesn't expand the amount of expenditures in excess of revenues that we already have, even though we've addressed some at the time we approved the budget, it's about three hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and forty-six in excess. So there will be mid-year cuts that will help offset that so that we are not creating a larger deficit than what we proposed we would do when we approved the budget in August. So the proposed mid-year cuts, our administration will only be seeing a two percent increase versus the two point six four that will come later. We are proposing to reduce substitutes used for professional development between now and the rest of the school year, approximately a hundred and fifty substitutes in total, which is about twenty-one thousand, seven-twenty. Then we will also be looking to reduce building budgets and department budgets by about five percent in order to create some, some savings there. And then there's a small amount of diploma completion that has historically been unused in their allocation that will be swept into the budget scenarios as far as cuts. So the total does equal the three nineteen, six forty-six if we do that. The variation of the approximate five percent is, you know, utilities we probably won't be able to cut because that's one that we are deficit spending on, but yet there's others that, that will. So it's an average kind of, of where we'll pull those from. And those, if approved, and we will work with the buildings and the departments to make those cuts. So there is a motion to approve the outlined budget reductions.
So just one clarification here. We're not cutting a hundred and fifty substitutes. We're cutting professional development in areas that will have less effect. So we don't use a hundred and fifty substitutes translating into those dollars there.
Basically, a day. And you might have thirty people in one activity. So it's just that day. So that may be a better way to describe it. Thank you for that clarification. Sounds like a lot of people when you look at it at a hundred and fifty. Basically, it's the number of full-time days of a substitute cost. And you could have, in an activity, fifty, say, come. And so it'll just be looking at those and determining which ones we maybe can do less of between now and June. Unless there's some questions, we just would need a motion to go ahead and approve the budget reductions for eighteen, nineteen as outlined.
I'll make it. I move the Board of Education approve the outlined budget reductions for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen fiscal year as outlined above.
Second.
Venture.
Yes.
Gordon Ross.
Yes.
Ingram.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kimball.
Yes.
Beeson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you, Kathy.
So David Cunningham, Executive Director of Human Resources, Legal Counsel. You have before you two enclosures. One relates to the tentative agreement reached with the Lawrence Education Association. The board enclosure will summarize for you the, the language issues that were addressed in this year's contract. And then we are also recommending that the salary proposal that was agreed upon would be funded. Two million, one thirty-seven, three eighty-two in total. And that would include the fringe compensation that was actually approved earlier. So it's, it's included in here as a grand total. But if there are no questions related to the language, then we would simply need a motion for the board to ratify the tentative agreement so we can finalize the eighteen, nineteen master agreement.
Do you need two separate motions here, Dave, or?
Two separate.
I'll make the first one unless, if we're ready. Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve the tentative agreement and ratify the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen master agreement and the certified compensation and fringe package previously approved on May twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen in the total amount of two million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Second.
Gordon Ross.
Yes.
Ingram.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kimball.
Yes.
Beeson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Venture.
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you. The next enclosure pertains to classified compensation and administrative comp. The agreement with Lawrence Education Association was a pool of money representing two point six four percent. We applied the same percentage increase for the pool of money to be allocated in the classified salary ranks as well. And so that will allow us, if you might recall with the implementation of the classification study, we created a salary schedule and so we were able to move across the schedule and then fund a little bit on the base as well. So that would represent two point six four percent for classified employees. Kathy's already mentioned administration at two point zero percent. So you're looking at two different sums of money that would represent the total pool dollars. A hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight oh five for administration and nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars for classified compensation. So we would request and recommend that you would approve those two amounts for classified and administrative compensation for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen.
Give a motion.
I move the Board of Education approve the administrator and classified staff compensation packages, including fringe benefits previously approved on five twenty-nine, two thousand and eighteen for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and five for administrators and nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-two for classified staff.
Second.
Ingram.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kimball.
Yes.
Beeson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Venture.
Yes.
Gordon Ross.
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
And I will just say that this was a tough year for negotiation teams on both sides, but I think that we came to a good agreement in the end and so thank you for everybody's commitment to the process. So our next item is the establishment of a board committee for budget and program evaluation, which Kathy's gonna talk us through.
So one of the things that we've talked about is every time we kind of get to budget planning and, and cutting and then thinking about how that fits into strategic plan and the listening and learning. the process of what that needs to look like and not having to kind of do things at the last minute, but kind of have some structure around it. In the past, we've done that a number of ways. One of the ways that we've done it, that it's been, it's been a number of years, but it was very inclusive. It included a cross-section of district staff that, one, were educated on school finance, educated on the school district budget, and then they kind of served as liaisons back to those groups, as well as as subcommittees of the larger committee where they might talk in depth about a program evaluation, would include then, community, parents, students, things that would help, you know, kind of spread that information on program evaluation. So the idea is that the committee was with board direction. It would evaluate both existing and new programs tied to the budget, related to board goals, strategic plan. Again, those subcommittees are used to get the really nuts and bolts understanding of a program in order to bring back, whether it's in a year of budget cutting, you know, what would it look like with lesser dollars? Whether it's a brand-new program and understanding all the ins and outs of it, the budget implications from things that could be staffing, it could be transportation, it could be whatever those holistic costs are, have an understanding of that. Existing programs, it would be evaluating things like class size and what does that look like? And how does it need to look? And what are the costs if you do it this way, or if you do it this way, or if you do it this way? And just really helping kind of the board understand what those program costs are and how they could look and allowing you some better understanding and information. So it's, the committee work would be a lot more in-depth than just sort of an advisory. It would really be involving staff in just understanding how those programs and budget is developed. So through that, then, it systematizes, again, the additions and reductions kind of thing. The board's wrestling with deficit spending. There's lots of initiatives that we're wanting to do and address, and there's only so much money that we have to work with. So we need a process and a system that will help us get there without just being kind of, let's pick on this one today and let's pick on this, or maybe not looking at it as a whole picture. So that's the idea behind the establishment of a committee. And so what we're kind of recommending is that we would establish that board committee. And if it's approved, then we can have either now or after it might be approved to talk about what the composition of the committee would be and some of those goals and objectives. And I can actually kind of go to that. I noticed that there's a typo in the header there. But basically, the composition of the committee, it's a lot of people. So it is that cross-section from board members to principals, teaching and learning, and then including certified staff at different levels, high school, middle school, and elementary specials, including classifieds such as paras and custodians and food services, because they're all impacted by budget and what we do and that domino effect that programs can have. And we're all sharing the same pot of money. So we should all have a little bit of a say in what that looks like. As a result, the committee would need to plan on and be committed to a couple meetings a month during the budget season in order for us to get information and to get work done. In addition, they might have to serve on a separate subcommittee. So if they wanted to be a part of a class-sized subcommittee, then they might have the two core meetings, but they also might have meetings related to that subcommittee. On off-season, if there is an off-season, maybe July to November, it would be once a month. The idea would be if you're going to be absent more than three times, then you're not going to be able to stay on the committee. You have to be there, you have to be involved, and you have to be able to really take it all in and not necessarily come with an agenda, but with an open mind of what's best for the district. And then we would look at kind of, you know, the purpose being, helping the board prepare for, review, recommend budget considerations that are being requested, make the board aware of impact of those budget considerations. And then really with board direction, is there anything off the table? What do you want us to look at ahead of other things? If there is a priority in your all's mind, would you like to focus or refocus in a different year? Because we can't obviously do everything all at once, although we'd like to. And so, and then, you know, as the state releases funding, what is our target? And then how does that look? But there's already initiatives on the table that we've already kind of got going on. We know compensation is an issue. We know that specials, as it relates, is an issue. We know from listening and learning, class size is something that's out there. We know, there's just all kinds of things that are, the late start and how that would go into alternative schedules for students at the high schools. All those things are out there and they all have a budget implication. So what do we do first and what do we do in lieu of something else? And how do we do that? So we need a system. And so this is just an option that we can discuss, discuss further, or kind of roll into it. It'll have some rough spots this first year out, obviously, because the strategic plan is kind of coming almost after what we need to do to get started. As you think about our hiring season being in March and April and all those things, boom, 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 we have decisions, but yet it feels backwards. And it will always feel backwards a little bit, but particularly this year. But we do have a need to get started with some decisions and some priorities and some focus. And so that's, that's what we're proposing here. So really just need to open it up for discussion, can make it look, it would be something you would want and need, you know, direction from you. So it doesn't have to necessarily look exactly like this. This is just sort of pulling something out of the box so you can kind of start your discussion. And then if you want to move ahead, we'll start right away in January, getting education and groups together and get it rolling.
Well, Kathy, I would definitely, I'm a huge fan of this. I think this is a great idea. I definitely, you know, like you said, there might be kinks. It might not be the perfect way to do it, but it's a really great start. And it's a great experiment to see if we can get that, you know, a little bit more of a general sense of buy-in and people know what's going on. I guess the only question I would really have is how will we, assuming we can get the dedicated committee members, which I think will be challenging, given what they really will need to understand and know, just making sure that we have a system in place for those people to have access to information and PowerPoints and all the things they're going to need to go back to their different groups and explain kind of what's happening. I think that that would just be something to keep in mind as we go forward on it. But I love the idea. I think it's great. We talked a lot about it in negotiations about needing to have, you know, more buy-in and definitely working with LEA to talk through, you know, all the different representatives from the, from the staff side and having them as a big partner here, I think, is really important. So I'm excited that we're moving. So I would, I would argue that we go forward as quickly as possible and not delay getting this started. I don't think it'll do us any favors to postpone it as far as next year's negotiations, which are right around the corner at this point.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm excited about this, too. But I do have a question in, I understand the budget implications and the dollars, and obviously that's always important. But the part of this that, you know, I find really interesting is the program evaluation part. You know, and I think it's really important for us to evaluate the effectiveness of what we do and to do that on an ongoing basis. But I want to, so I would like to make sure in terms of how this goes forward is that that doesn't get kind of lost in the discussions of funding, because I think that's really critical. You know, I believe Avid has been successful, but I'd like to see some real hard data that shows us that it's been successful. And sometimes those hard data actually, data is plural, those data actually, you know, will tell us, well, maybe this isn't working quite like we thought it was, and maybe there are adjustments that can come from that. So I think that, you know, yes, the budget part is important. I'm, and I'm fully supportive of this. I think I already told you that I just want to make sure that the program evaluation part isn't lost. And we have the people on the committee who can competently do program evaluation.
And that would be the goal, because student achievement, if we're doing something, we're not getting the results that we need out of that, then we need to think about whether that's the right thing we should be spending our resources on. And if the people aren't exactly the people on the committee, we should be able to reach out to a subcommittee or another group or layer to help with that program evaluation as far as results and whether we're achieving what we need to out of that. So we want to make sure that that is continued, because again, if you add something brand-new, you really should review it a year or two years and really see if it's making that difference that you.
Or even things we added a number of years ago.
Right, exactly. And that would be existing. So when I say it's for new, it's all existing and new. It's really for everything that we do in order to make sure that if we need to relocate resources, you know, it's always kind of been a board goal to make sure our resources are getting as much as we can directly to the classroom in order to achieve what we need to do as far as results-based. And so hopefully, this will just help us do it with a little more of a system around it, and that would be our goal. So again, probably see a few hiccups along the way, but we'll get there. And I think it's a step that can make us align things with what our strategic plan wants us to get to.
Rick, I will tell you that we are committed to the program evaluation piece. I often say, hope is not a strategy, belief is not a strategy. We can't operate off of this idea of, we hope that this is working or we believe this is work. We're hearing good things, but always, you know, communicate, where is the quantifiable evidence that this is indeed working? And so rest assured that we will make sure we have a team that's evaluating everything that we do, from people to programs. Because if we're going to be fiscally responsible with taxpayers' dollars, we have to be able to communicate the why, why we're doing this, because we have some quantifiable evidence that shows that, hey, this is, this is working.
Well, and that what we're doing is in the best interest of kids.
Right.
So I guess, one, I'm really excited about this. I was hoping we were going to do this. I love this direction. I really appreciate the subcommittees being able to look at in-depth information. And I appreciate your willingness to take this on, because I understand that organizing this is not going to be easy this first year as you pilot it. The one observation I would have is that the District Site Council's establishment, prior to becoming the District Site Council, was in fact a fiscal review committee. And when I think about their objectives and mission, there is some slight overlap in what you all are doing here, so that we're looking at these board committees that we have, that we are making sure that there is good communication between those entities as well and that they are informed about, you know, what's happening. And we're helping keeping everyone essentially in their lane as we have, as we bring on this new committee, which, again, I think is a great idea. So thank you.
And then the other thing I was going to mention, we had a question, and I just want to kind of throw it out there. The question of compensating certified staff for work like this came up a lot during negotiations. And so just kind of having that out there as a possibility for, this seems like it's going to be a pretty hefty commitment for certified staff and classified staff, for that matter. And so keeping that on the table as something to consider, and it sounds like that's something you've already been discussing, so I appreciate that as well.
What about the board members that serve on it?
Yeah, right. You'll get compensated at your same compensation level. Double, okay.
Jessica, I had, I think this is a very good idea. And I, but I would like to see this come back to us again with a more specific committee charge. I think that one of the things that has been not something we've done very intentionally over the last few, over the years I've been on the board, is with our board committees, we have not done a good job of providing direction from the board level as to what we want them to be working on and what outcomes we want from them. So I think this is a good start, but I don't, I don't feel like it's. It's not specific enough for me to say, okay, this is a committee charge and we have a good idea of exactly what, you know, we want them to start doing. You know, so if we approve this tonight with the motion that we have, is that something that we can bring back after board leadership and staff have had time to put some further input into it?
And that was the intent, is if you, if you want to move ahead with this, then the idea would be we'd need to start kind of getting the people. And really, the, probably the first meeting in January would involve maybe some education component as well as what that, that direction is that you want us to do, or if there's a focus of certain things, sort of some of the teaser kind of things that were in the second page here. We'll, we'll come back with a little bit more meat to it, but really didn't want to go into a whole lot of that unless this was a direction that you really.
Right. And I'm definitely supportive of the direction. I just, I want us to do a better job of being intentional with the direction that we're providing to those board committees. I think to that point, and Kelly, to your point, I mean, it would be interesting to sort of think through the District Site Council, and is it necessary anymore if we do this?
Well, it's required by statute.
You have to have it for statute. Yeah, okay.
So that, so one thing, based on what you were just saying, to think about would be perhaps there should be some overlap between membership on the District Site Council and this committee in some way.
The finance advisory piece of that really has sort of gone away.
Right.
As a result of them being a site council for the purposes at KISA. So, and the kinds of things they were looking at really for the financial advisory was really just a preview of a lot of board meeting kind of information. So it really wasn't with the same objective and goals that we would expect out of this. So I think there is, and we've kind of mentioned, I think, one of my bullets in that discussion page was that those subcommittees would include advisory groups as well as community, students, staff, so that we, you know, if there is an advisory group out there working on something that, that would be a part of whatever that program evaluation is, so that there could be that liaison between those, so that there's good communication on some of those groups that have already started with specials and some different things. We want to make sure that there's, there's some back and forth and we're not doing things in isolation. We really need to collaborate with all those groups.
Yeah, I think that's really critical. And as an example, if you take class size, I know that class size came up in District Site Council as something we might potentially take on and look at in-depth. It came up as we discussed whether or not we needed to, when the boundary committee would be meeting again. So we have all these different entities looking at this really important issue and making sure that when we are looking at the strategic planning, that there is just really tight coordination between those groups and really good communication. A lot of the initiatives that could come out of many of these committees as we move forward with the strategic plan, for example, may need adoptions to policy. And Shannon and I have been discussing that. So I just think that, to the point of communication between these committees and making sure that, who the district administrators are that are leading them are communicating with others so that we're bringing in the right people at the right time.
When do we expect board docs to be online?
We have training this week.
We have our training.
Yeah, but in terms of when, when.
We're pushing for January.
Okay, okay. Because it seems like the committee function within that is one way that that particular resource will facilitate this.
And I think, I think the committee function will facilitate it. I think once we get a strategic plan in place, that we can start to tie back specific agenda items from any committee back to a specific strategic item, strategic plan item in terms of tracking things through and across multiple committees, that you can go to the strategic plan and you can pick on item number four, and then you can see every committee that had an agenda item that tied back to that item. And you can see it across multiple, multiple places.
So with that in mind, you want us to approve the establishment. You'll work on a charge that's more thorough and detailed. I would encourage you to involve LEA in that, to reach out to Lori and bring her into that conversation. I'd like to know that that occurred when you're reporting back to us about, about what the charge would be. I think that's really important. Is there anything else that we want?
Yeah, the thing that I may do is have Dr. Lewis, you know, we need some feedback from you as far as is there things specifically you would like this committee to focus on? And so between us coming back with you, we would like some feedback from you as far as if there are some targeted things that we want to evaluate first or need to address first that maybe on his Friday communique or something we can, or me just telling you. But, but we need your feedback in order to, to kind of make sure, again, as I kind of mentioned, are there some immediate focuses, because we can't do it all. So we're going to need to, there's a lot of those initiatives that are already out there, so that may be our initial focus anyway, would need to try to address those.
That would be my first, my first instinct would be to have them working on looking at what we're already doing.
Together, yeah.
Yeah.
Because we need to come back with how that fits into the budget. And understanding what's out there and how it does or doesn't fit into the budget, and then where we go from there when it doesn't.
The vetting process for the subcommittees, like how would that look, especially if you get a significant amount of people?
Some of them may already exist, because if you've already got a committee working on specials, then we shouldn't recreate the wheel, but we may need to create some crossover input from, from this committee and to have them report back to this committee so that they can ask questions and vet out what. so that they can ask questions and vet out what they've done and make sure that we've got a complete look there. And there's some forms that I would suggest we use for program evaluation that kind of ask a lot of questions to make sure that we've addressed as much as possible in what impacts all the programs might have as far as location and make sure we get the staffing information and, and how they're going to evaluate it and how do we know if it's working. And just some of those hard questions that we're going to need to know before you would approve new dollars.
Okay. Anybody have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the establishment of a board committee for budget and program evaluation to begin this fiscal year for the development of the 2019-2020 budget.
Second.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fincher?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, our next agenda item is the 2019 legislative priorities. And Shannon and Kelly have been working on those, so they're going to walk us through this document. Can we maybe pull it up? Can we, do you mind pulling it up just so it's up here? Thank you, Dave.
Okay, for the benefit of the community that might be watching, so this is something that our district does every year around this time because at the, immediately prior to the legislative session, we have an opportunity to present our legislative priorities to our legislative delegation at an event that's hosted by the chamber every year in early January. And this year, you know, this document has kind of grown over the years that I've worked on it. And so this year, when it came time to, to start talking about it, one of, one of the priorities that I, I wanted to accomplish was to try to condense it and organize it a little better so that it was a little more impactful. So a lot of the content is something that board members have seen in years past with some tweaks. Basically, we took, took the priorities that were in last year's agenda and organized them into four categories essentially related to kind of our structure of constitution and state law around elections, tax policy and school finance, spheres of authority between the State Board of Education, locally elected boards and legislature, and then recruitment and retention of highly qualified teachers and staff. And I think the, the two things that are, are maybe slightly different than in years past, the language around the finance formula, we tweaked because, you know, they've, they've passed the new finance formula. It's been signed off on by the court, basically around all of the equity issues and all of the adequacy issues except for the court's order that the legislature adjusts the, the formula to account for inflation over the years between the last, between Montoy and now, more or less, trying to get back to a place where adjusted for inflation, we would have been if they had followed the last formula that had been deemed constitutional. So the State Board of Education has made a recommendation about that. And the list of the language in here was edited to, to reflect that, you know, we're supportive of making that adjustment as recommended by the State Board of Education. The one new issue that's been added is the piece under the second header about commercial property appraisal. And so for, for board members who may not have been aware of this, this comes from a, a court of tax appeals case that's making its way through the system in Johnson County. Some big box retail, a big, a big box retailer in Johnson County has made the argument and it was successful at the lowest court level and I believe it's on appeal now, made the argument that their commercial property should not be valued based on its use as a productive commercial property, but rather at a value of what it would be if it was just a big empty building. So in, in the way that, that property appraisal works, it, the value of that property is substantially less if it, if, they call it the dark store theory. If, if you, if you value it under an approach that looks at if it was sitting there empty, not being used, what would this building be worth? This came up during last year's legislative session. We did have some discussion about it at KASB because the fear is that if that theory were to be accepted at a court of tax appeals level and then put into practice, that you could have changes, you know, a very large change in your task collection on commercial properties mid-year and therefore for school districts, you would severely underfund your LOB. And you would end up with a big deficit in the year that that happened. In subsequent years, that would get made up, but what that would mean is the mill levy would go way up, particularly on residential property owners who, who would be making up the difference in, in the valuation cut to those commercial properties. And so this, this was in the, in the city of Lawrence's, they mentioned this in their legislative agenda. And so we took a look at it and made the suggestion that perhaps we included it in ours because it, it could have a very, very negative impact on our district or any school district if that theory of valuation were to become, it, it's not been generally accepted, but there's definitely a push to try to make it an acceptable theory of valuation. So Kelly, other thoughts?
I do not have other thoughts.
Okay.
Nice job.
All right. Questions, feedback, changes?
Do you have one really tiny question? If you go back and look at the nonpartisan elections held in the spring, it does, is it meaningful to specify in odd numbered years?
Perhaps.
Because that would be going back to what we used to do, which seemed to work just fine.
Right. If they're held in the spring and they're nonpartisan, is there a big difference if it's in an even number or an odd numbered year?
Well, I think that, you know, you're going to have the big elections in the even numbered years. And even though they'd be separated, I could see that's.
Election fatigue.
Yeah, and less attention.
So I have a question about that, just to follow up on that. When, we were, we kind of talked about that at the last KSB thing I was at. So are they recommending an odd years or are they keeping it at just spring?
Their language is a little different. And I can, if you give me just a sec, I will, I will tell you what they said. Thank you, David. The language that they ended up adopting for the association, KASB supports nonpartisan school board elections and holding local elections during a different time than partisan federal, state and county elections. So they didn't, they, they left themselves some, that was designed to leave them some wiggle room, not specifying going back to the spring. In the discussions that we had had about it, I left, you know, in doing the drafting, I left spring in there because we've talked about the, the business cycle and the school year cycle of the school district. Spring elections fits our operational model much better than fall elections or at another time of year. So I, you know, I think it's fine if we want to say odd numbered years. I, I don't, I think that would be a fine addition. And there's no, I don't see any problem with putting that back in there. Are you comfortable with the spring, with spring as a, you know?
I'm comfortable with either personally. I just wanted to know what their language was so that if they had basically this, we weren't kind of pushing for a separate agenda.
And to the spring point, I think we heard from other districts as well, there was a, that, that was the general consensus that because of the way districts operate, that spring would be optimal. So when we think about what we're asking our legislatures to go back and take to Topeka, the one that resonates somewhat might be using that language around spring. That would be the only, I mean, because it speaks directly to the needs of school districts.
And I guess that was my point. When we were having those conversations, what I heard from other districts across the state was spring. Nobody really talked about odd or even years. I don't know that it was necessarily something they were thinking about or not thinking about. I just feel like if they're getting it from lots of different districts and it's saying basically the same thing.
Well, if it, if it, you know, if this somehow moves forward, which I, you know, I'll keep my fingers crossed.
But don't hold your breath, right?
Yeah. Somebody starts talking about the spring of the even number of years, that's going to throw everybody's terms way off.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, if it gets to that point, I'm sure we would have input to.
It's fine. I'm okay with adding it in. I certainly.
Yeah.
Anybody have any?
No, I don't have one with it.
It's fine. Any other comments or questions? Thank you both for working on this. I really appreciate it. Do we need, we don't need to.
We need, we do need to adopt it.
Okay.
I think there's a motion.
Yeah.
There is.
I can make it. I move the Board of Education approve the 2019 legislative priorities as outlined.
Second.
Kimball?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fincher?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Can I clarify that as outlined would include Rick's amendment?
Amendment.
Okay.
The, of adding the odd numbered years.
Numbered years.
Yes.
Yes. He was motioning to me. I was like, uh-oh. But you were on a roll.
You got a throat snort, Dave.
Okay, yes, thank you. Thank you, Dave, for always keeping us where we need to be. Okay, so next is board policy regarding class size goals. And again, it's going to be Shannon and Jelly. And it's Shannon and Jelly, Kelly.
You have to get that loud.
Jelly goes, what do you want?
Actually ran for student body and that, anyway, I won't go into it.
Thanks for.
Yeah, you like that little, yeah. Maybe I'll make the paper. That'd be awesome. So I wanted to bring back to the board the request to move the goal size out of, or the language around class size goals out of the policy manual and move it to where we still, where we keep our other goals, which are typically within our strategic planning. And in doing so, we would allow more opportunities for committees, like for example, the budget committee, to have all the goals in one space. And as they are making recommendations, that they can cite those goals and, and show that the budgetary choices we're making are in line with the goals we are, we have outlined as a board. So that's just as an example. I did have a lot of confusion from the community around why we were making this request. So I just want to clarify again that Shannon and I are actually making this recommendation so that we can honor the request by the community to begin to look at class sizes more in-depth and comprehensively. And we believe that moving this language out of the policy manual will in fact have that impact. So that's the essence of why we're making the recommendation. I will say that when I had the opportunity to explain this to community members, I didn't receive any pushback. For the most part, I received thank yous for the clarification and support for the recommendation. Once I had opportunity to explain why we were making the recommendation, I understand that it's a, I understand how it, how it might be perceived on the front end as we have that conversation because it's, it's kind of a.
You're doing what?
Yeah, it's just a technical thing we're doing to move the goal into the right space. So.
I think, I think it's important to, to emphasize as much as we can that we're not dropping the goal. We're moving the goal.
Yeah, the, we're actually move, I believe this action will move the class size reduction initiatives forward.
And I agree with that. You know, we talked about it at our meeting when we initially introduced this proposal, that this is not being done from a place of trying to say that we don't think classism is, is important. It's actually the exact opposite. We think it's very important. So important that it, it really does not belong in policy because policy is not a place where you put goals. If you want them to be actionable and achievable and monitored and transparent, it's a terrible place to, to, to have that, that reside. And so, you know, I, I think that, that it is, it is a better approach to really push this into our strategic planning process. And, and I think it will allow us to have a more transparent and honest conversation with our community about how class sizes actually are set because it certainly is not using that policy. You know, we have, we have cutoff numbers that we use in deciding whether we're going to split a class and add a teacher. And it, and it depends on whether we have contingency teaching positions available in the budget to add a teacher. And those are really the factors that have driven class size decisions over the last number of years. And we need to examine that and look at how we are doing that if we want to have an impact on reducing class sizes, especially in some of those lower grades, which is something that I, I feel very strongly that we have to make progress on. So with that, I, I, I feel like this is the right move on this. And it, again, it's not coming from a place of, of believing that, that class size is not important because it's, it's, it's very important. And we just have to be looking at it differently.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Let's make this final comment to say that as, as we, if we move forward with this removal of the goals related to class sites out of policy, that it, as we develop a plan around class sizes and the recommendations that might coincide with that, that we have the ability to be fairly nimble with our policy, to go back in and make adjustments as needed, that will help support initiatives that Dr. Lewis and the administration may decide to undertake as it relates to class sizes.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the revision of the reference policy by removing the section pertaining to class size goals.
Second.
Beeson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Fincher?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Our final agenda item for the evening is the post-entry plan with Dr. Lewis.
All right, again, good evening to our board and to our community that is sticking with us tonight. I also want to welcome and thank our, we had 21 viewers earlier viewing us online. We're down to 16. So let's hope, let's hope we don't lose those 16. But thank you for taking your time to, to view our board meetings online. I will tell you, I'm super excited. I almost felt like I felt the first day of school when I started. And now I get to present some learnings from my first 100 days. And so definitely excited to present to the board and to the community, a reflection of my first 100 days here in Lawrence Public Schools. And I will tell you, I talk to people in the community a lot and they sometimes ask, well, how's, how's it going? You know, what are, what are you learning? And, you know, just have a two-minute conversation with them. But I have a captive audience and a mic to tell you all about it. So I'll try to get it done as quickly as possible. But I do recognize that it's hugely impossible to capture 100 days in a 15, 20-minute presentation. But I, I do want to share some highlights of some things that I definitely learned during, during these first 100 days. Before I begin, I do want to acknowledge and recognize Dr. Jim Lentz in the audience today. He's my mentor that was assigned to me. He's also the past superintendent in Garden City and Augusta, was also the superintendent of the year. And so thank you so much, Dr. Lentz, for being here. So one of the things that, when I moved to Lawrence, I wanted to ingrain myself in the community. And as I moved, my family, I wanted to ingrain them, my fam who's here tonight, I wanted to ingrain them into becoming true Lawrence residents. And so there were some things I wanted to accomplish from a personal standpoint. And so I created a personal entry plan. And I want to update you on that as well. Excuse me. I was able to complete all of about maybe five goals. So I missed about five goals. And some of the ones I missed was number eight. I haven't attended the first Friday yet, but I hear I, I definitely need to do that final Friday. See? Well, haven't watched a movie yet in Liberty Hall. Goal number 14, I haven't taken a cooking class at the MERC yet because I was probably too busy working on number seven. That's finding more brunch and, and lunch spots. That's finding more brunch and lunch spots. But needless to say, I will work on completing those goals. That's in my personal entry plan. My first 100 days as superintendent here in Lawrence have been rewarding. It's been eye-opening, enlightening. I've had, I've had the opportunity to meet a lot of students, a lot of teachers and many talented classified staff and community members. I had had an opportunity to talk to Kansas Department of Education personnel. And my notes are not moving with me here, so you're in for it now. But I began to reflect on these first 100 days and I will tell you that it's some extremely dedicated teachers in this district, some talented students in this district that are funny, they're inquisitive, but most of all, they are smart. And that's what I really love about what I've learned so far here in Lawrence. I've had the opportunity to travel all over the city. I've been working on a number of things, but one of the things most importantly I've been working on is establishing trust. And I've tried to position myself to be visible and available to all community members. I've attended tons of community events. And a couple of goals, I wanted to go out and just motivate people around this whole notion or this whole idea of being the best. And I believe when we are our best as adults and as educators working with our children, then they receive the best and they deserve the best. And so that's why I'm hugely excited about what I've learned so far here in Lawrence. And during my interview, if you do recall, I shared with you some things I wanted to accomplish during my first 100 days. And after spending about 18 days prior to starting on July 1, I revised and developed an entry plan that was available online and updated weekly. And the plan consisted of five goals, 29 action items. And some of the goals that I wanted to accomplish during these first 100 days, I wanted to establish that transparent and collaborative trusting relationship with, with my board. I also wanted to ensure that, that laser-like focus remained on the instructional program. Wanted to really take a deep look at the organization and see how the organization is functioning, if, from an efficiency standpoint. Also wanted to be able to identify those barriers and opportunities. And I often call them, some people call them the low-hanging fruit, but I will tell you quite frankly, there was some fruit on the ground that we capitalized on and continue to leverage. And then finally, I also wanted to ensure that all voices were heard during this process. Asking a lot of questions, spending, you know, time listening to people. But also wanted to just go out into the community and conduct listening and learning tours. And so we conducted six listening and learning sessions from September to October. And this was an opportunity to get a large number of individuals in one room to have some thought-provoking conversations around four simple questions. In addition, we placed a survey online that participants had an opportunity to provide us feedback. And I will tell you, we wanted to hear from everybody, wanted to have an opportunity to, for everyone's voice to be heard during this, during this process. And so this is what came from our respondents. This is demographic locations and the number of respondents. And I was definitely pleased with the turnout south of 15th Street and east of Iowa. They had our largest turnout in terms of attending these events and providing their feet, providing feedback. We had 542 students to provide feedback, which I was thoroughly impressed with. 254 parents or guardians, 188 employees and 113 community members took the time to give us some extremely valuable feedback. So let's take a look at some of the, just a quick highlight video of the tour. Has some volume? Can it go louder? I think we all know that, that definition of insanity, right? So I, I want to do something different. I want to do something for the benefit of the children that are currently in the seats in our, in our district. And so let's take a look at what our community said. And so we asked four basic questions. So the first question we asked was, what, just a simple question, what are the strengths of Lawrence Public Schools? And this is just, just a snapshot of what some of our respondents had to say about the strengths of Lawrence. And so one, all, basically all of the comments around strengths were relative to facilities. They appreciated the work that we have done on facilities. They also liked the resources that were within the school. They commented on, on teachers, on the teachers that we have in our schools. And one parent even said, we have teachers who care. And that's, that's huge. We have, one student said, they're good teachers, they're good teachers and they will help you make, make sure you get your work done. And also they will help you accomplish your goals. And so they spoke extremely highly of our teachers that are in our buildings. So next question we asked them, what areas need improvement in, in our district? And I'm turning to my notes here. It's some of the feedback we heard. Pay for Paris. I think we heard that tonight from a patron commentary. One employee said, focus on student achievement and classroom instruction, reduce the number of initiatives and focus on personnel and just a few key items. And you heard me speak often, talk about less is more. And we asked them, how can we raise the bar of academic success for all students and eliminate opportunity gaps? And one, one parent stated, more support for behavior and mental health issues. An employee said, relationships with kids. And a community member stated, focus more on early childhood education. The next question we asked, as the budget remains a challenge, what should be the priorities of the district in order to make Lawrence Public Schools the best school district in the country? So I had several respondents responded to that question. We heard from parents numerous times around smaller class sizes. Also had a parent stating, addressing, addressing the social and emotional needs of all students should be the priority in this district by creating a safe environment where each and every student feels valued, supported and important. And we also had another employee state increased classified and certified pay. So those were the four basic questions that we asked them. And if you saw, we had close to 800 or more respondents. And so we're feverishly going through all of that data and we're hoping our consultant will help us comb through a lot of that data to identify these areas that we will continue to, to work on. So the big question is, so how do we, how do we get there? And I will tell you, we must first move or continue to move with a sense of urgency. I want you to take a look at this quote that's, that's on the screen. It says, our teachers are overworked and underappreciated, our schools are underfunded and in need of repair. Our students are often unchallenged or worse unmotivated. Our brightest students are not competitive with those from other nations, perhaps to their own peril. And perhaps most troubling of all, our standards of education are shockingly low. Would you say that, that kind of sounds like our education system today? Some parts of it? Some parts of it? Well, I will tell you, that came from a Time Life magazine, 1958, crisis in, in education. So what has changed? And so how do we continue to get better? How do we transform this district? And I shared with you, I didn't come here to perpetuate the status quo. I didn't come here to be a transactional leader. The work that we need to do in this district is definitely transformational work. So how do we really get from good to, to great? One of the ways is making sure that there's alignment in the work, alignment in the work that we do. And so what I've noticed in, in, in most cases, that there's currently some good things going on in this district. And so what this graph indicates, on the left side, that's where I feel that we are in this district. Those are good things, but they're going this way, they're going that way. How do we continue to ensure that our arrows look like the one on, on the right? So how do we get people? How do we get processes, programs and structures all on the same page going in the right direction? And so as a result of that, you have high levels of learning with all of our initiative, all of our programs, all of our people going in the right direction. So what, what that will mean is supports for the whole child. That will mean supports for our families, effective instruction, meaningful and impactful professional development, some things we heard from the Listening Learning Tour, rigorous and guaranteed viable curriculum, meaningful assessments, data systems, professional learning communities in our, throughout this district, and effective leadership. And so how do we do this? How do we get from good to great? And so I wanted to take a minute to kind of just capture some of the learnings and next steps in terms of how do we get from good to great? And I want to capture these in, in our five goals that, that we had coming in. And so first of all, goal number one simply says, we wanted to develop a transparent and collaborative trusting and productive relationship with the Lawrence Board of Education. And so one of the things that we, we've done on, on June 26, the board and I sat down with Dr. Brian Jordan with the Kansas Association of School Boards, Kim Poson with Poson Consulting at the Bioscience and Technology Business Center for our retreat. We spent about six hours discussing a number of things, but some of those things, we talked about the board's self-evaluation, communication, how the board wanted communication and then vice versa, constituent services. And we also talked about my evaluation during this, this first year. And I will tell you, as a result of our time together, we, we developed a consistent schedule of one-on-one meetings. I have had one-on-one meetings with all board members and continue to have one-on-one meetings. I just had one today with, with GR and have one scheduled with, with each one of the board members over the next month, I believe.
Did he really take you to Fuzzy's Tacos?
Took me to Fuzzy's Taco. It was good. It was good. It's a plug for Fuzzy's Taco. In addition, of course, want the board to continue to analyze the, the strengths and areas for growth. And I will tell you what I've, what I've heard from other superintendents, I shared this with, with, with the board, when I listen to other superintendents and they talk, and Dr. Lentz could probably attest to this, I don't know how your board was and your districts, but often hear, I would say horror stories, I would say of superintendent and board relations. And I will tell you, I, I can't participate in those conversations because I have a supportive board that, that's really dedicated and wants to see this district to continue to grow. And so as a, as a governing team, we're ensuring that we are continually building that level of trust throughout the school, community and definitely the community at large. And I will tell this board, one way that you can continue to support, and I have board members ask, ask me that often, you know, what, how can we continue to, to support you? Just continue doing what you're doing and focusing on those critical areas that's needed that you dealt with tonight relative to policy, governance and supervising me, which may be a difficult task, but I definitely want you to continue to hold me accountable for the goals that's outlined, not only in, in my evaluation, but the goals that will be developed through our strategic planning process. Goal number two was to ensure a laser-like focus on instructional program to close the resource gaps of our lowest performing student groups while determining the academic, social and emotional needs of our students. I would say achievement gaps, they don't start at the high school, middle school level. Sometimes they don't start at the elementary level. They start well before students even walk in our, our doors. And so this causes us to really examining, begin to examine our resource gaps. It also causes us to examine our opportunity gaps and also our expectation gaps. And we must be honest and challenge ourselves that what do we truly believe about student learning? What do we truly believe about all student learning in this district? And you know, we can, we can change the furniture in the classrooms, we can put up new walls and learning pockets all across the, the building. But I will tell you, we have to also begin to examine and change our mindsets too about what we truly believe about all of our students. The data is clear, we've shared the data with the board, we, we know where our gaps are, we know where our under-representation is, we know where our over-representation is. So how are we going to address this? So one of the things, we're going to utilize our data consistently and make sure we have accurate data from the district to, down to the school. We must support the work of everyone in the building, from our principals to our teachers to custodians, cafeteria workers, our prayer professionals. If you notice outside the building, when you walked in, it says Education Support Center. We must be about that middle word, support, and making sure that all of our people in our buildings that are in the trenches have the support that they need. In addition, what we've already done is establish a, what started out as an assessment team that we will hopefully have more people join. That also morphed into a, an instructional walkthrough team. And so we've been out in buildings as a, as a district team doing instructional walkthroughs, visiting teachers' classrooms and leaving feedback for our principals. Most importantly, I think we've been learning a lot in terms of the state of teaching and learning in, in our district. Again, we want to expand our social and emotional support for our students. And I skipped the bullet. We want to definitely fully develop and implement a system to improve graduation. Graduation is not the end. And so we need to continue to, to shift our mindset. Yes, we want to make sure we're getting students graduated, but we want to, I always say, from the cradle to career, to and through college. And so coming up with a system to develop, I mean, to improve our graduation and our success rate, and that's where are our students two years after they leave us? Are they still in school? Are they still employed? And then are they finishing college? And I think you've seen from our partnership with KU that we're beginning to address some of those issues or concerns. We want to refine our instructional framework and we were able to attend the Avid Conference and I think that will help us with that. But I mean, it's, it's really simple for me. Culturally relevant teaching, that's making sure that our students can see themselves in curriculum and instruction and it's relevant to our students. High expectations, that's just one of the most highest leverage strategies or, yeah, strategies, I guess, you can use in, in positive relationships. And if you're familiar with, what is it, the Pygmalion, Pygmalion Effect? Do you remember that? Yes?
I feel like I'm about to get quizzed, but yes.
Okay, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give you a quiz and I wrote it down somewhere. But where is it? After me notes. Yeah, so that's Rosenthal and Jacobson were the ones that actually coined that phrase. And so basically, it says that when, when adults or teachers really show that they have high expectations for students. high expectations for students, our students tend to perform better. Positive expectations influence positive performance. And a quote from them is that, when we expect certain behaviors of others, we are likely to act in ways that make the expected behavior more likely to occur. And so that's just simply having high expectations. What do we truly believe about all students? Do we truly believe all students can learn? I would tell you, our students will know when you're, when you're faking it, when you really don't, don't believe. And they will probably shut, shut you out. But how do we ensure that all of our students walk into every single building and every single classroom and know that there's high expectations for our students? And then of course, positive relationship. And I think it was Rita Pearson who said, students don't learn from teachers that they don't like. And so they don't have to be their friend, but they have to, to like them. And I try to, I guess, demonstrate that when I'm in, in schools and building relationships with the students. I want, I want students to know their superintendent. I had a student just say, he, he didn't know what a superintendent was before this year. So that's just one of the many things that we're going to continue to do as we continue to move the district forward. And then of course, our work that we need to continue to do around our curriculum. We have Dr. Vessalo who's working overtime really, and she has some people that, that's working with her to make sure we have that true guaranteed and viable curriculum. The only way to know, to know if we have a guaranteed curriculum is, is that how are students performing on, on the assessment, which is an assessment that measures how well we're teaching those state of standards, those state standards. And then finally, we must be about the work of just answering these three questions that's, you know, have been around for, for a number of years, these professional learning communities. It was, what do we want each student to learn? How we know when each student has learned it? And then finally, how will we respond when students experience difficulty? And if I could add a fourth question to that, that would simply be, what are we doing for students that already know the content? Or what are we doing for students that are performing two or, or three grade levels above? And so this causes us to make sure that we are creating environments that are meeting each and every student's needs. It's so, I mean, we don't necessarily need our students to qualify for something, we just need to make sure that their needs are met in the, in the classroom. Goal three, I'm going to try to rush through, rush through these. We want to increase the organizational effectiveness and efficiency by providing high levels of support. There again, that's just providing support down to our, down to our buildings and making sure that our buildings have what they need to support our students. And as a district, we are looking at ways we can do business a little different. We must be responsive to our school buildings. And what I've learned, there's a disconnection or there has been a disconnection between district office and schools. Data, data appears sometimes to be clear here at this level, but it sometimes may be elusive at, down to the building and even at the community level. All, a lot of our students deserve access to strongly educators who are highly skilled and, and well-supported and diverse. And I think one of the comments, I don't think I, I pointed it out, but it was one parent that said, she's a parent of a, of a Hispanic child and she don't think that, well, I don't know if it was she or he, but they didn't think that their child, or their, their child hadn't had a, a non-white teacher his entire schooling. And so we're already working to make sure that we are recruiting more teachers that look like some of our minority students. A big part of improving support is organizational effectiveness. And so this will cause us to examine our team to make sure that we are, we have the right people in the, in the seats that are able to provide those supports to our buildings. Goal four, identifying and analyzing those critical areas that are both barriers or, or opportunities. We will continue to visit schools weekly and the listening and learning doesn't stop. We'll continue to listen and learn from our, all of our stakeholders. We'll, like I said, we'll continue to review our data that we've collected from these, really from all these first, from these first 100 days. We definitely want to kind of look at our early childhood programs and system to ensure that our preschoolers, whether you're at home, you know, the entire time before you come to school, or you're in daycares, and so how do we partner with some daycares to make sure our students come to school kindergarten ready? And then also, we, what we've learned is looking at from, from some of our data is that making sure that our kindergarten programming is rigorous so that our students can be successful on that first grade level. And there's research out that supports that students with, in addition to their parent or guardian, a student with one more caring adult is twice as likely to be successful, you know, post-secondary. And so we want to introduce a mentorship program. And so I often hear from business partners and community members, how can we support our schools, particularly our, our, our business community? And that's something I learned too, is that Lawrence, the community supports its, its schools. And a lot of times they, you know, write us a check and we definitely want to keep the checks coming. Want to make sure I say that. But in addition, how can you partner with a student to, to, to be that mentor, to just check in with that student frequently, to have conversations, whether it's a profession that the student wants to go in or not? But having that additional caring adult for, for all of our students is something that we're tremendously interested in. And then finally, goal five, looking at goal five, wanting to continue those opportunities for listening and learning. And what, what we know is that trust is fragile. We must continue to build it. So we want to continue those relationships and definitely capitalize on the feedback that we've received. We'll, the, the real work starts now, as we start our strategic planning process. And so while my first 100 days, you know, we started to lay that foundation, it's hugely important that we continue to work towards maintaining that, that trust and, and establishing that trust in some instances. But I have to put an emphasis, strong emphasis on the work that we're doing relative to making sure that our students are a part of this, this process. We have to bring them along in this journey. And so for me, it's imperative that the student voices are heard as we move this work forward. So I think Jim Collins said it best, as, as we talk about how do we move from, from, from good to great? Well, we have to recognize that good is the enemy of great. And if we're satisfied with just good, we'll remain, remain there. But like I said, I'm, I'm competitive. I, I want to be the best and our students deserve our, our very best. And so if we settle for being good, we will never be great. And I will say, we are on the way. We are on the way. I'm seeing some positive, positive things and I like to have quantifiable data to show that we're on the way, but don't have that tonight. But what I do have is a quote from, from one of our students. And I will read this because I think it's, it's powerful and it speaks to the work that we're, we're doing. And this employee said, I've worked in many districts and in every single district. One of those, one of those districts, my colleagues and I have felt that people in leadership positions at times didn't understand what was happening at the ground level in classrooms because they rarely showed up in those spaces. And we were out doing an instructional walkthrough and, and this person stated, I recognize that you had your own purpose for your visit at this said school on Wednesday, but from my perspective, it felt like an interruption to the systemic common disconnect between leadership and building level work. Your united presence spoke volumes to me and the staff I support. There was a collective feeling of all students, one team, as I visited with staffs about, about your visit. And so this is just a testament of, of people that are, that are doing the grunt work, that are out, you know, in, in the schools, that they're beginning to feel the, the support from, from this office. And that's what we're about. We're out teaching classes or we'll be out teaching classes. I've taught a couple of classes and we signed up to teach classes. So we want to make sure that we'll connect it to the work because I always say, if we're going to make decision here at this level, we have to have that contextual knowledge. So I feel like a Baptist minister as I close. As I reflect on these first 100 days, I will tell you, I've, I've learned a lot. I've, I really have. And I wanted to pack it all in here, but I didn't want to be here till, till 12 o'clock. As, as I mentioned, we have some dedicated educators, dedicated and supportive board. We have a community that supports its schools. Most importantly, we have some LPS students that are amazing, some of the most amazing students that I've ever met. And so we must move with a sense of urgency because I always say that kids can't wait. And we owe it to them to be our very best so that we can become the best. And the, the old brick and mortar schools, the old traditional schooling, it worked for, for you and I, we turned out okay. But we have different students that are in the seats, even just, even from last year. It's, it's, it's different students. And so while the old brick and mortar worked, we've got to go beyond that and become a school district where teaching and learning is, is innovative. And not only that, teaching and learning is 24/7. You know, we have devices and so how can learning really be 24/7? Now, if you notice, I did not mention equity in this presentation and that was done intentionally because equity will become just the way we do things. And everything that we do will be looked at through the lens of equity. And you know, that, that means that circumstances such as race, gender, special education status, ethnicity, sexual orientation, English language, whether you're an English language learner or not, your socioeconomic status, those are not obstacles to student achievement, but rather we celebrate that. We, we bring that into the classroom and then it becomes springboards to accelerate the learning of our scholars. And so in LPS, when it, when it comes to our kids, I do mean that, and we will show you that all means all. We will embrace every scholar and, and every single family that walks through, walks through our doors. And so it was, he says, we talk about our, our next steps. As Jessica indicated, we did have interviews with our two consulting firms and we've reached out to do some reference checks. One of the superintendents that used one of the firms in Pittsburgh, I had a conversation with him and I will have a follow-up conversation with him about one of the, the firms. And Paula has reached out to them, I think, again, today for some follow-up and we will tell them exactly. So they gave us the broad overview of what they can do. And now understanding the work that we've already done in this district, narrow it down and we'll let them know exactly what, what we need them to do. And so we were looking, we're looking to follow back up with them probably within the next week or so. And this is where stakeholder, we will, we will come back out to our stakeholders to develop the strategic plan. We will work intentionally with our LEA around a lot of these comments and feedback that we, that we've heard. We want parents to come and be a part of, of, of this strategic planning process. And we will share the strategic plan with our board and gather additional feedback. We want the community to throw darts at it. And then hopefully finally, we'll bring it for board approval during the, the summer for first year of implementation, 1920 school year. And I'll just close with this final, final quote. And this is just kind of speak to the knowledge that I've come to be in contact with members of our executive leadership team and many of our teachers and observations in the classroom. We already know what it takes to prove, improve our schools and we're doing some of that. And but Ron Edman says this, we can, wherever we, and wherever we choose, successfully teach all children whose schooling is of interest to us. We already know more than we need to do this. Whether we do it or not must finally depend on how we feel about the fact that we haven't done it so far. And that's a quick synopsis of my first hundred, 100 days. And so I don't know who's responsible for these balloons back there. And that's what I was, I just want to point out. But yes, we are at the, this is where the real work starts. And I often tell people, you know, honeymoon phase doesn't last long. And so honeymoon is over, it's really time to get to, to work. So entertaining questions from the board. Thank you.
Well, I don't have a question, but I will say that it's been a pleasure watching you these first 100 days and working with you and seeing how you have already really changed a lot of the culture and not just within our buildings, but within how administration talks to the board and talks to each other and makes presentations and all sorts of things that have been really big improvements. So it's been, you've been a breath of fresh air and it's been really fantastic working with you. So it's, that I'm very excited about. I can't wait to see where you take us going forward.
I will, I will say, I would say, this is for, for Dave and Paula. I don't think Nick Saban would be as successful as he is without a team. And so I will tell you, I, I get the privilege of working with an amazing team every single day. We push each other, we laugh, but we, we, we really are about the work of, of improving this district. And I just want to publicly thank all of our team members that are here and any team member that are one, maybe one of the 21 that are watching, thank you. But we have some talented people. Sixty now? Okay. But we have some talented people that are truly dedicated to this district and really are wanting to see improved outcomes for our, for our students. And I also get the opportunity to work with an amazing union president. And so we have some, some great conversations as well. And, and I always say, it makes the work easy when you have good people that you can lean on and you can work with. And so I want to thank our team for what you do and what you're going to do.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lewis.
And thank my family for sticking it out.
You guys are good sports.
Tell you how many times she gave me the eye. And also our, one of our realtors added in and also his family for staying.
Well, that is dedication. Before we adjourn, we'd like to say happy birthday to Darcy Kraus. What do you want? Never looked so good on you.
She always wants to fly under the radar.
Do, I have a motion to adjourn.
Has a birthday coming up too.
Happy birthday.
Okay. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.